And I do want to highlight, and I'll talk about some too, the Highland Competition, they took first place. Won captions for Outstanding Effect Music and Visual. The Madison Competition, they took first place, also winning for captions and outstanding effective music. And it would be nice to me. In Bridgeland Band, in the Bridgeland Band Invitational in Utah State, they took first place. Won caption for outstanding music, and then their last event, I H U Mountain West Invitational. They took the first place for outstanding music, and they also won the Gem State Award, which is awarded to the band and earns the highest points in the whole competition. So there's some pretty amazing talent in the High Desert Band, and also some pretty amazing instructors. So I'll invite Jacey and Basie up, if they want to say anything, and then all the band members up in the studio want to shake their hand.
Absolutely.
One really, that's you don't have any like. Right?
Yeah.
We, we had an opportunity to start this group a few years ago, and you imagine and envision this kind of success. Uh, it's a shared success. And it's wonderful to get with the colleague every day through the season, and to bring our resources together. And, and to do this crazy thing with marching band. I don't know who invented it. Probably the people that were using the gear to get out. Like, come on, you're making this stuff up. These guys work hard every day. There's this school that has to travel. Figure all that out, hard for you to set up that company. And our students. And the other school, they have to set everything up so they're ready to go. And that has become such a well-oiled machine. So great, we'll put these parents and their students, because it's not just us, it's the business unit. And everyone, this is a cliche thing in marching band, it's true. The truth is, everybody's a starter, and we are best. Everyone can play, everyone with their show, march every single show, and, and have it. Because it shows.
I, I do have a question. What time do you begin rehearsals?
We take a break, thank you very much. The rehearsal started about three thirty, and we're not doing it every day. We're also making sure that we do it every day. We've been doing it three days a week. And that timeframe showed us, as we, as it's not two or three hours, it starts out that way, and we need to. We got kind of it was to be that, so, that's a, which I'm going to talk to them. So, that, that's another thing that makes me impressed, is there's a lot of bands that are spending more. And.
Please, I've got fall camp and spring camp.
We, we do have a week of spring camp, and then two weeks of fall camp, so students get a lot of their time in there to know. And the goal is, is also we can have a good show by then. And then we're, if we achieve that goal, because it happens every year, then we can step up. Depends on the length of the show. Um, this last year's show was side of the dune tree, and it's something that partners share, it was a really special show. And so I was like, what are you going to do next year? And I was sort of like, and, and you just have an idea. And I'm just going to say that there were a lot of dangers to students and parents, because they didn't know yet, how to actually do the show, they didn't either, who took a chance. And, and those are the factors that you do, doesn't always stay. Well, this season, it sure did. See, I got it with this down. Do you have more questions?
Any other questions, sorry? Thank you. We would like to invite the band to come up, and we'd like to shake everybody's hand in the High Desert Marching Band.
Is that where it goes?
Congratulations. You're so proud of us. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah.
Make sure I bust the light back.
Are we need to be out there again?
Yes.
Yes or no?
All right. Thunder Ridge. This is incredible.
Hey, we got the best bands in the, in the state. Well, thanks for having our Thunder Ridge High School Marching Band here tonight. Uh, I've also got a list of the awards that they got. I issued Mountain West Marching Band Invitational. They received the award Best Music, Best Percussion, Best Visual, and Best Auxiliary in the competition. Uh, I'll just, I'll say this, these guys, these guys work as that hard as, as any athletic team, club that you'll see in our school. Uh, oftentimes when I'm driving into the school, uh, in the summertime, at six thirty in the morning, or seven o'clock in the morning, they're out there. Uh, giving, they're all trying to beat the heat, I think, in the summertime for sure. Uh, you know, out there on the pavement and out there on the football field, trying to beat that heat. But I really appreciate Mr. Skidmore and all he does. Uh, for these kids, the time that he puts in helping them. Uh, just a, just a great teacher, and our marching band has, uh, grown leaves and bounces. Mr. Skidmore took that over and pushed that up here in our school. So, uh, kids are awesome, a second to none. They, they are, they have great attitudes, they come from great families. They're not kids that we have to worry about in our school, maybe staying eligible, or whatever it is. They're just, they just know how to get it done, and they go do that. So, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Skidmore, let him say a few words about the kids, and then, guys, same thing, they'll want to shake your hands, so be ready. Mr. Skidmore, do you want to talk? I want kids up.
I'm not bringing all of them.
Okay.
Members of the board, Dr. Wilson, thanks for having us here. These students I have in front of you, I wanted to come up because we really work on student leadership. They have to complete an intensive interview. They have to have letters of recommendation to be selected. And our drum majors are right here, Haley and Abby, and they're both seniors. Uh, Tyler here was our front on top, old captain. Nathan was our drum line captain, and Kendy was our color guard captain. Uh, probably the section that drew the most here was covered. Uh, we didn't have a team, but we had an assistant coach that really helped us get that together. Uh, when, uh, Mr. DeBel talks about excellent events, that will see where we've got to learn. So we're especially proud of them, as well as all the work, all the marching tightens. And we don't practice, but that's nice for Mr. DeBel. Uh, we really need to give a shout out to our parents who pull the trailer and get the kids and feed them and do everything. So marching tightens, I believe. I think all your parents are about, will you give them a round of applause for it? They brought a band out, and they take their steam, I do all, make my dog ones, you do applause for it. So I can add to say, I mean, who's? I guess there's a mushy of any questions.
Questions, Bob?
I have a question, but I have a comment. Um, and I'm going to keep my fact together. I got to witness every single one of the competitions this year, and it was so impressive to me, to watch the teamwork, to watch the camaraderie, to watch them on and off of the fields. And it's just amazing to see it evolve, because it's, it's the same show, but it's never the same show. And just, it's super impressive, and I love that you're all here, so that we can celebrate your successes, because that's what we need to do. So thank you guys for, for putting our district in such a good light.
Yeah. That's great.
You know, as they're walking out, I have to tell you something. They, uh, they had a lot, students have a lot of choices of things that they can do. And they've made a wise choice. They've chosen to be creative, upstanding citizens, and we are so proud of you. Thank you for your time and effort and contribution. You are winners. Thank you.
It's to be me again. Um, uh, proud of this moment for Natalie Woods, here to recognize her. And I write this down, so make sure I don't get it wrong. The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Uh, she is the recipient for Idaho. Just a, and she'll say a few things about the award as well, but only fifty-five teachers in the country have recognized this. Um, and she's going to get a ten thousand dollar check, uh, from Federal Wilbur, what I think, National Science Foundation, and a free trip to, to Washington D.C. to be recognized. Um, I, I can't, I don't know, I can't count the times we've recognized Natalie, and the things that she's been a part of at, uh, Thunder Ridge within our district. Um, we, we've always known Natalie is one of the best teachers in the country, and it's just, um, super happy and proud. Sorry, but, uh, proud of being her as principal. She, she can do, she, she has qualifications to do many of the things that teach kids. Sorry. Whenever, um, whenever something needs to be done, um, you don't ever have to agree about Natalie and getting something done. She just does so, and she helps with the grant project. She's, she's on our, she's our, um, advisor for the National Convention. Uh, she took the, the kids to the National Convention, and she's probably be part of that. Um, but, uh, yeah, just super proud of her, and if, if I could phone Natalie, I would do it a hundred times. And that may be, it could be one of the best districts in the world. So Natalie, come up, and, uh, well, yeah, thank you.
So I just want to start by saying how much I love my, just love it. I love going to school every day, I love the kids I work with, and I have fantastic colleagues, super supportive administration, and because of all that, I'm able to do the things that I, I'm physically here. Uh, not quite sure what you want to know about the award. But it's a big deal.
Tell us more about you.
Okay, so you have to be nominated. Um, parents can nominate you, administrators can nominate you. So I, I got a nomination in twenty twenty-three, or in twenty twenty-two. Then you have to film your class for a thirty-minute non-stop film of your class. Then you have to analyze it with, of course, fifteen extensive studies. And then they, then you have to get letter of recommendation, you have different kinds of evidence, support, what you do, and your effectiveness, so things like that. It, it was, it was pretty major, and so I thought, I'll do this once, but not do it again. Uh, and then, uh, then you submit it to the state, and then if you're a state finalist, which I was in twenty twenty-three, then they submit it to the federal government. They'll, they usually submit it to M A P, and then you sign it. Then, then the White House, they have the National Science Foundation that, for the White House. Then they go through, and they decide if they, the state has someone that's a high caliber. If they do, then they'll choose which one is going to receive the award. In January, in January, they have about ten days left in the administration. They had announced twenty twenty-one to twenty-two. They haven't done it in so, and we're excited. We've just been waiting for years to, to hear, and we finally heard. It's exciting. I got an email that popped in one day.
That's awesome.
Awesome, Sean. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a certificate.
Oh, sure. Maybe because I have it now.
If you'll shake everybody's hand, we should come out around the other side.
Yeah.
We've got lazy and old old.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
You've got students and teachers like that. It can be better. This, it just speaks volumes. All right, Mr. Pill? Nothing, okay. Well, then I'm not, uh, not going to, I'm not going to read the public input, I, I can get away doing it. Uh, we will need a motion to, uh, approve the consent calendar.
I'm not that we approve the consent agenda.
Uh, yes, agenda, it's not a calendar. Mrs. Scott's move to approve the consent agenda. I mean, a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by this, like, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm mostly carries. Thank you. All right, uh, superintendent, uh, reports and recommendations?
Thank you. So, um, I would like, since we've been working on our suicide prevention policy, and the board's been reviewing that, reviewing that, that'd be super helpful, uh, for even hearing a little bit more about Hope Squads, and those are functioning, that's such crucial part, it's like the whole part of our suicide prevention, but it is still essential, um, to complement that. So with that, we've asked Lori Baldwin and Susan to come and present the work. They, um, started this at Bonneville High School, and then, um, after seeing success there, uh, then we rolled it out to all our schools back in about two thousand and seven, if you got some right, so. So with that, I'd like to invite them to come, that's a good return.
Absolutely.
In a tag team, yes. Ms. Sarah Holton, uh, health board, I'm work involved, I'm a teacher, I'm one of the best. So while Scott's doing this, we wanted to present this as if you knew nothing of Hope Squad. Okay, um, kind of like, like it was in two thousand and seventeen. We had lost three students at our school by suicide, and we, I feel like we were very blessed when Hope Squad was brought into our school district. I'm very blessed that they brought it from elementary, middle school, and high school, all the schools, because we have found it successful. All right, so what is Hope Squad? So Hope Squad is a peer-to-peer program. That is the key. It's the peer-to-peer, because students know more than the adults what's going on in schools. Um, what's amazing is when we get these, these Hope Squad students, they're nominated by their peers. So they're not, they don't run for an election to be a Hope Squad, but they're, they are nominated. So that's how they become Hope Squad member. Um, and this program, it helps to reduce the suicide, and it does this through education, training, and peer intervention. And for you to take just to monitor with the statistics for our state, I know consistently ranked number five of our great suicide deaths for the last ten years, or the last four years. We've actually done it at the top ten, and now we're ranked number. So with what is happening, we know that there's still one great work that needs to be done. And as we talk about suicide prevention, we need to remember it's a community issue. We need to involve churches, service organizations, businesses, and our schools. As we look, we see that the leading part of death pursuit for people aged ten to thirty-four, it's still there. Another thing that we know, is we show people who are considering suicide, or are developing a cell phone, that in one town, we have to, and their friends, their family, very rarely are they the natural fucking dead. So, we're talking about how great Hope Squad is. The best Hope Squad, part by, or by nomination. So what we do is we embed this in your registration process with the here, they have age students, they're selecting their, they have the option to nominate to three of their peers in your school, to be a part of a school. When we hit that list, the work from the council really begins. If we stop with just the nomination and the, we end up with student council, and that's a great program. So once we know, uh, what the behinds of those, then we go to, I have meeting different organizations within the school. We want to know, who are those kids on marching band, or basketball, or refrigerators, drama? What can we, without the lunchroom today, we just came out with if we look at our nomination list, and we take those who are out of each of those groups, we have, obviously. Once that happens, we'll still have them, that if they can gain Hope Squad. And we look at others, and we take it to administrative, and we're saying that there is definitely yes. Just because some may have difficult issues, not mean necessarily that they're being made to be the best. If it's something like baby, that doesn't mean necessarily, uh, they can't be the best. If we don't know how many other students baby, that's true. And other things, we want to make sure that they know they're not being, that they're charity counselors, and Hope Squad is not a children's program. So once we have our new merit exam, which is an invitation, and even the legislation started looking at merit rights for the body. So every year, without exception, you have to prove that. And the parent will have a final say, and who can accept the invitation, that was enough, because people do want to watch enough for this. They know what they're doing. We know that most of the children are making a lot of spot, they don't want to and they don't sacrifice their sleep, they refuse to take their hurts. So the Hope Squad, and teaching them, and we need our parents to not say, hey, my child needs to take a step back. And that's happening all the time. I want to get this, for all this for the child that I daily hate, it isn't fun, it happens to you. All right. What, you know, you, you learn each year something new. And when Sarah got fortunate to be the ones chosen at Bonneville, and what was awesome is because I have the teaching side of it, and Sarah has the counseling side of it. And it made, it made a perfect balance. And then we found that it just made the work lighter too. So I was being, I was able to give it my all in the classroom, and paperwork, and, um, counseling, Sarah. And so it just made us more successful, we have found. It's okay, but then, we, we grew a little more. And we found, and we were very fortunate, we had Jackson, was the principal at the time, and he was phenomenal. Supported us wholeheartedly. And I would say, all the principals that I have worked with at Bonneville have been amazing, and have supported Hope Squad. Then we, I, I, I found out I needed more help. And the bigger our Hope Squad has grown. And so other teachers have helped as an advisor role. And it's nice to have them in different locations in the school. So for example, well, this year, she's one of our college advisors. So she, she sees kids at a different level, um, so she can really see if there's, you know, how we can help too. Um, also, you have the counselors, who definitely, we need them on board with the program. And we also have parents. It's really good to get the parents there too, and, and get involved, because the more they're involved, they understand the program more. Because we tell our students, we want to make sure that you always, like your homework is just at home, and share what we learned today, and make sure you are with your families. Any, any circle of influence that you have, we want to share this Hope Squad message to them. And here is a picture of our outstanding principals this year. And each year, just to make it official, we have them sign a contract that says they will wholeheartedly be go um, support Hope Squad program. And then we save those, if we ever have a problem, we just show them their certificate, send you guys signs. So, and they're awesome, they're amazing. Okay, and then here is our great Hope Squad kids. And I'm going to tell you just a little bit about the advisor part, and then Sarah's going to tell you a little bit about the counseling. And one thing is, this process never ends. It's like, each year, we learn more and more, and it's just because everything is changing. Uh, our, our students' lives change, what's going on in their lives. Um, you know, like from the AI, and it just, I mean, it's just always a change. And the things that we have found that really make Hope Squad was first strictly like Sarah said, you have to stick with the nomination process. Um, I see kids, and I think, why? These are awesome kids, I love them, I'm passionate, but they might step out the door, and I don't know how they interact with their friends. I don't know if they're a good teammate, not a team, I don't know if they're posting on social media, but the kids, the kids know. And, and some of our Hope Squad, um, kids have said, I never thought. and some of our Hope Squad, um, kids have said, I never thought anybody would ever nominate me to be a Hope Squad. But let me tell you, those kids have so much empathy and just natural talent of caring for other people, so you have to stick with that nomination process. And then we need to know them. Um, we have retreats, um, we also make classroom norms. I find if it's their rules, then they're going to support them. So each trimester, um, we pull out our classroom norms and say, okay, what do you guys think? Do we still want to stick with these? Is there anything different that we'd like to do? And just kind of, we kind of glance at this list, some of the things that have stuck out to me is when a girl said, we just need to be nice, but we can't be fake nice. Now, they're like, well, what do you mean by fake nice? Well, you know, you know fake nice, and so we talked about it. Um, the kids are so smart about this, and just this simple, like, we just need to smile, we just need to smile with people when we see them. Um, we need to learn their names, we need to learn something about them. So we have a goal, by the third week into the tribe, we want everybody to know all the students' names in their classrooms and something about them. So if I say, hi Sarah, you know, how's your daughter, how are fingering students? Sarah really knows, and I know her, we made that connection. So that's another goal of this inclusion and helping students, because we figure if all Hope Squad's kids do that, then we're hopefully reaching so many students in our school, so they know that they're known, and they know that they're This is just an example of the curriculum. I just wanted to explain with the Hope Squad program, all the advisors from all the secondary and elementary, all this curriculum is there, it's really nice, they have slides, they have the worksheets, they have everything available, you know, what am I going to learn? Why am I learning it? How am I going to know if I've learned it? So it's all there. You, you do tweak it a little bit for your own personality, but it's great, and they're constantly updating this curriculum.
Hey, so just kind of examples of what's been taught, there are different levels of the curriculum course. We have our elementary where they're learning about Hope, they're learning about what is the belief, uh, they're learning about how to never to use. You know when they get to your life? Okay, there, okay. They start to learn questionnaires later for QPR, and that's a gatekeeper program where they learn to set up questions for your mental health suicide. And they know how to expect to get help for their fear, which is and sometimes they're thinking, is it too much money, can I have a piece of suicide? But if you're in a room, okay, they're going to, okay, I'll give you, uh, we'll talk to them as soon as I got thoughts, self-hormone. Kids are afraid of being exposed, what will do, they'll do their tool, depending on their and of course, personal boundaries again, which is very nice, I don't know if you know any junior graduates who need to work on boundaries, you know, they're my people. And then of course, in high school, um, we're, we're going to talk about QPR, and the big thing that we did at every level, he was one of the clearest self-secure. Then you can take care of others better, when you know you're eliminated, you're maybe just a peer of anyone, it's a good thing that you're bigger than people who
All right, so activities. We try to do an activity once a month, and when we're planning these activities, we want to have a purpose and a goal. Of course, we want to have fun, okay, but then what else, what else are we trying to accomplish? Inclusion. We want to bring everybody in and provide something that everybody can have. So for instance, this week in Bonneville, we're having a Hope Week. So we plan, different activities will hit our special needs group, so we had the kids that like music, so we had karaoke in the little theater today. We had little ducks all around the school, because the snuffing ducks, and kids were just running around trying to find the ducks today. We had a dance in the gym where we had the ninth, third, and fourth hole, and the teachers against the students, and because our theme is tangled, and the, the weapon of choice is a pan, so we played pickleball with a pan. Um, but then you also have the coloring pages, the kindness card, so you're trying to include everyone, so that inclusion. We found, when Sarah and I first started Hope Week, this was the perfect week, because it's Valentine's, and it's not really very much time if you don't have a girlfriend or a girlfriend, you feel like a loser, so that's why we're trying to make everybody feel like they're winners. And then second, in Idaho, everybody's ready for spring, but it's still freezing cold, so we're bringing happiness into our schools. Um, and what we are really trying to do, too, is also educate about mental health. And the younger generation, they are very wise and very smart, and, um, they, I, I really feel like they're teaching us, they're not afraid to talk about mental health, they're not afraid to say, hey, sorry, I'm with the class, but I was at the counselor's table. Um, and so they're not afraid to share that. So here's an example, one of the things we did is we taught a kindness to, at a an assembly, just teaching the science of kindness, so we're always trying to think of ways that we can teach this school.
And then for the counselors, what we do in youth school is we want to make sure that anyone who has contact with our students, those of the QPR training, so everyone knows, if you're not able to act as an adult, uh, that you can still get them included in, in help. So sometimes, we know it's very difficult, and that may be our only plea that we have to do to lose some part of all of that, by the way, we kind of have it with bus drivers, so no good. Just have some drawings, uh, someone who has an environment drawing, and they brought it to Lori, and then Lori brought it to me, and we were students, um, which one of our educators for this one actually, who were involved in that child, and they were actually, I would drawings coming in. And then, QPR is data-driven, and this is the type of data that we have for, they want to know, um, some information, and it's they want to know about
So anytime, um, one of our Hope Squad students refers, a student, so for example, when Sarah and I were visiting this afternoon, right after the bell rang, we were still to get out, I had one of my Hope Squad kids come in, and he says, you know, Mrs. Baldwin, I'd like to talk to you for a minute, I'm worried about this, and he told me the situation, and I was able to get that note to the counselors, that student will be seen tomorrow. Another example we've had this month is some of the Hope Squad students went in and taught, and helped. And that same day, two students themselves went down and said, hey, those, those signs and those feelings that they were talking about, I'm, I'm feeling that way. And so it's, it's just educating these kids and helping them know where so it's, but it takes a whole team, it really does. And one amazing thing I found out is our teachers. My students will come in and say, hey, Mrs. Baldwin, someone's really having that. We need to help Mrs. Sullivan, or, you know, they're not acting right, and plenty of times we've gone out, and, you know, surprised them, heart attack them, whatever, and the teachers have said, you know, it's sweet. So these kids are incredible, and bringing them all together, having them believe in themselves, and in the Hope Squad program, this, this makes it great.
And then, we're about to have our eighth annual Idaho Hope Summit, and we posted this seven years ago now, eight years, but we have all the Hope Squad in our area, and we come in, we just, we have speakers come in, and they were the kind of and had the chance to see that there are a lot of people that do the same thing that they're doing.
And we're lucky to, and also the community. We have found that the community is so willing, helps out. So when I first reached out to Malaluka, they told me the price to rent the facility, and I was just like, well, I don't know, I'll have to go back to you. And, but then they told me back, and they said, we have a sponsor. So totally covered, and so at least we are third here, have you there, and they find us a sponsor every semester. So it's just a great program.
We have more slides about activities, one of you have a question, acknowledge that.
Looks like it's about a four to one ratio, the young women. They just naturally were, actually so empathetic that the kids will come for it.
There's a mental life to you, isn't there?
Yeah, I think mine is pretty balanced, actually. And I think we're pretty lucky, because sometimes we have the opportunity to go to other schools and help them structure programs, and they'll say to me, wow, where do you get all these big guys to come be in the Hope Squad? So I, I think we are a pretty balanced group. Sarah's probably right, girls just like to go to the janitor.
And sometimes you put a lot of cameras in, you know, boys disappear.
Is it a one-year commitment for these students? Do they stay on for multiple years?
The option is staying on, is if they've been an active member for some of those other schools that they know did more than done, and wanted to and each school does. Like, they don't do nominations, but they're so much, they just have it in the book more, anyone who wants to be, I mean, the transition from middle school, at least from Rocky Mountain to Bonneville, um, they're, all the Hope Squad have Rocky Mountain, they do need to be nominated again on school level. But at Bonneville, like Sarah said, if they're an active member, um, if they've been to all the activities, then we have, um, lunch, lunch meetings, um, then they can stay on. So I have students that have been on all four years, and have been in Hope Squad classes, and we see the tracks. I mean, they just
And, and I don't know how to ask this person. Uh, sorry if I, I used the wrong words. Tell me about your success here.
It's real hard to prove a negative. Um, the very first year we were coming off of the free death, by suicide, and one incident, the teen death, everybody remembers. In two trimesters, we had eighty-seven kids who were committed, uh, by, like, they were no, they just came in, eleven of the students were committed to the HCM, and they were ready to commit. Um, three others, we knew about the road, but it was so it hasn't been quite in that crisis mode. The following year, it's a same number. But I think we've been through the entire year of the TBH team, because we and so I would love to say, I have definitely intended to be pointing life again today with it.
You'll never know.
Yeah, well, Sarah not actually talking about this today, and as we tell our students, you'll never know who you've helped. Um, you know, just that smile, or the glow, or come joy, it's come to come to the game, to the spot, just those words of kindness, inclusion are going to make a difference in kids. Matter of fact, with Malaluka, back to them, um, that first year, they had said yes. And then he called me, and he said, oh, I'm so sorry, but we haven't consecutive lunch meeting in that, in the room, I didn't realize. So I was like, you know, maybe next year. Within a half hour, he called back, and he said, I talked with the man that was in charge of that meeting, and he asked me, what was it? And said, I've been supporting the Hope Squad. And he said, I can switch my lunch because my son's in Hope Squad. And so I kind of have a feeling he's the one that always is our sponsor, so it's just one of those things, I just don't think we'll never know how we're going to make a difference, but I, I think we're talking about this also. I think this is something they're going to take with them forever, it's just going to change. They are, they're going to go out into society, and this is going to be how they more empathetic, more genuine, more compassionate, more helpful, able to see the signs, you know, not just saying, oh, that was a but really saying, you know, something, being able to trust those, those gut feelings that they have. So really statistically, we can't say.
And after the first couple of years, the council began a war over, about, hey, my group's succeeding a little more today for immunity and virus, who has changed the culture of this. And everybody has heard about that, but it's amazing.
I think it's one of the best things we've ever done.
I think, I think I have dropped seven, or seven levels in the state, it's just I don't know if it is now.
Yeah, it's all about the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, uh, graduation rates?
I think probably everybody's heard me, so, um, so it's that time of year where we get the graduation rates reported back to us from the state. And so this, this will go back to last year's graduating class and their cohort, so, um, that, we report that to the state, uh, in June, and then sometimes there's corrections that happen in the state reports, and then in the fall, uh, they release preliminary data to our principals, um, for our principals to review the data, make sure everything is accurate on how the kids are coded, and then finally get the reports back, um, right around in January, so. And So, um, just a reminder, I know we talk about this every year, but, uh, when we talk about graduation rates, back in, it's around two thousand and twelve, uh, the state, it actually happened at the national level, uh, under the No Child Left Behind Act at that time, they said they have to have a standardized definition for graduation, because some, some states had one definition, and that's for high rates, other states had other definitions and had really low rates. And so the way that's been defined is they look at every student who, um, enters into school, starting their freshman year and then on, and then that school becomes responsible for that student's graduation. So in our district, for example, if students, um, enter into their freshman year at Hope Press, and then eventually they end up going to Technical First High School, or Lincoln High School, or Bonneville Online as a time student, uh, then then that next school is one that holds their graduation rate, and then, depending on the student's, um, exit status from that school determines whether or not they qualify as a graduate. So a vast majority of our kids, as you'll see, qualify as regular graduates, but some students don't. So students who are in special education programs, that qualified, remain in school the past, uh, four years, they were counted as graduates, and so every kid that's in our flight program does not count as a graduate, because they don't graduate within four years of flying. Um, and those are probably the most challenging ones, um, and we've talked about this before, but Lincoln, that takes a lot of kids, um, that have by definition, they're behind on their graduation rates, if they don't graduate from Lincoln, then they end up holding that, that responsibility to that kid's graduation rate. So there's always going to show a ball, because they're picking up kids that haven't been successful for traditional high schools, uh, but once they, once they go to Lincoln, then Lincoln's going to want to graduate. So this is our historical trend, uh, with graduation rates, so, um, again, I think it's highlight from our district, but back in two thousand and fifteen, you could see where the blue dash line near world estate graduation rate, and then starting around two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we bent the state graduation rate, and then we significantly exceeded it for five minutes. So, uh, right at ninety percent of our graduation rate, that's tremendous a work from our principals and our teachers to keep kids involved in school, to really do that hard work, to ensure kids are staying in and graduating from our schools. Uh, this is the graduation rate by school, so you can take a quick read across, Bonneville was, um, right at eight, eighty-nine, Hope Press was at ninety-two, Lincoln was at seventy-two, Bonneville Online at ninety-one, Technical First High School, uh, continues to have a second graduation rate there, seven kids graduating, ninety-three percent at under the averages of district average, at just around ninety percent, eighty-two percent in the state, so uh, we, for the last five or six years, we've been consistently right around eight to ten percent of the state average. And, uh, so those are by school, that can historical, going back to two thousand and eighteen, on how, how our schools have done the graduation rates. And you can see, uh, both Bonneville Online and Lincoln, they really exerted efforts to improve their graduation rates. That's just a really, um, good shout out to Lori and the Lions for their work through their, their kids for giving them a And then, um, this one just breaks down by, um, different suburbs that we look at, so you can see, in not, not just all of our students, but students of minorities, or students who are commonly disadvantaged. students with minorities, students with community disadvantaged, students with disabilities and English learners. Uh, in in every one of those categories, we would see them stay. And this one is probably disadvantaged kids and, um, just a different person seeing how much that's. Seven, six or seven years. Any questions to the board?
Bonneville High School at eighty eight percent. If you go back to, yeah, just how many, do they have a large percent of those six categories?
So, uh, no, there was a time, so back, we just had the two high schools. Um, Bonneville's demographics were pretty significantly different from Hill Press. When we opened up Thunder Ridge, we were, we paid really close attention to that. We balanced out the three schools pretty well. So I haven't had a chance to talk with Justin. My guess is, and I shouldn't ask just right here in the middle of the board, but with with a complete change over the administration, I'm not sure they had the chance to review their graduation rates. Yeah, that's great. So, so, yes, the step program, the flex program is our program for students who are eighteen to twenty one. Those kids have to be enrolled at a school somewhere. And so the school that we've kept them enrolled at is in Bonneville. Even though the program's moving to the campus gym, we're state reporting, they have to be enrolled at the school. Um, and we really can't create an eighteen to twenty one year old school. Uh, so Bonneville does hold, um, all those students that's there. So every kid that's in that program. And we have that program as well. It went from, I think, just being maybe four students three years ago to now we've got ten and twelve, maybe fifteen kids in the program. So that's definitely having impact at Bonneville. I appreciate that, Justin. That's a good thought.
It'd be interesting to see, uh, complete demographics and uh, education parents and everything. I forgot. Yeah, if we're doing anything different, I I suspect. You'd see some trends in there related. I mean, yeah. Bonneville, I know a lot of people voted Bonneville, but you know, I'd be interested. No, I don't think the teachers are any less. I think there's something.
Any more questions?
Both stop.
Yes.
Looks like the state's been pretty flat. Is it, if you went back to twenty ten, twenty eight, is the state still flat? Why's, why's the state saying states flat?
It's a good question, Richard. I, I don't know. So I, I do know, I mean, you're gonna stay flat unless you're doing something fundamentally different to change, change, right? So I, I personally feel like our Monday intervention schedule stood a significant help of this. Um, that doesn't, I don't know, probably, but it's pretty close to when we started that Monday intervention schedule. And I think a real first clear focus on professional or new communities and ensuring or or giving kids the support they need in the success of the classes. So I don't, I don't think it's a surprise that we see that young graduation rates are really having a strong focus in all of our schools on supporting kids through collaboration and the folks on really what matters the most to their learning.
So I think what you just said is a pretty important statement. If that is I, I, I hadn't put that relationship together and and I'll tell you, even this last week, I was crumpling about Monday because I had to run home from work. But if that really is the thing that's moved that line, um, that's kind of a big deal and it's something that we ought to be talking to parents or our patrons.
Yeah. Back to Scott. Yeah, um, yeah. Well, so just going back through it, Richard, I should put math. So ten students in the flight program or step program, which is about what it's grown, that's a four percent impact of the two hundred fifty student graduation rate. So just like we get that four percent of them right at the same level of Stone Ridge and Hill Press. So I think Justin's probably spot on with the fact that all those kids are going to Bonneville is probably why it's pushing the graduation rate compared to the.
But if it's the P L C that's really making this work, then that's, that's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
And I would say specifically the intervention and then really what it's done is our teacher, you have a student coming back. Um, it has to, has to come back, has to develop, the teacher has to, um, make sure that students learn, less than impact. That's the mindset for teachers before one as well. If you don't, it's something great. If you don't, that's fine.
Do our, do our teachers themselves recognize this correlation?
Great question. So Saul's wanted to say something else. I'm just gonna say also that I think that we're very fortunate in our district to have online high school and the Technical First High School and Lincoln. So, so when kids are a sophomore, junior and Hill Press, Bonneville, Thunder Ridge is a team for them. They have three other options that they can find their niche and be successful. And so, I mean, of those hundred kids as technical careers, all of those graduates came from our high schools. And so when they have those opportunities to find a different environment to learn in and be successful, like that helps all of us in our district. And the commitment to those other programs is very unique in this.
But that's, that's an amazing correlation. That that makes the stats mean something.
Any other thoughts from our principal principals on?
Just a, uh, a huge shout out to our assistant principals. They, they really are in the trenches every day. It would be individually with these kids with their attendance and praise. You know, Justin, like coming from these principles over last year into this year. We, I, at least I have noticed a difference in what I'm doing on a day to day basis. Just, I can't say enough good about. And and every assistant principal in the district, there are every single day. Me and these kids, talking about attendance, planning we make for you. Going to meetings, going to five, four meetings and and just, like I said, being in the trenches every day with its kids. And 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 giving it all the same.
Uh, memorials on student.
So, um, so maybe I'll just start with this. Uh, we don't have the suicide, uh, prevention intervention and postvention policy ready for public review. There's still one key part of that. Gotta have some final decisions on reference. So that's why that's not on the agenda tonight. But in working through this policy, I really appreciate our legal counsel. Abby French does a great job of reviewing policy and looking at things we should be thinking about. So she moved into this one. Uh, and she just gave me a little note in her pulse and said, Scott, you really have to look at your memorial policies. I think it's outdated. So, um, so as we updated the suicide prevention policy and looked at the memorial policy, I hundred percent agree. Um, we have an outdated policy that generally it's created some issues for us. Creates some issues with maintenance. Um, probably the best example is on the west side of Hill Press Baseball Stadium, at one point, the trees planted as memorials. Uh, those trees are now, just like happened in our yards, I've significantly overgrown and created really um, some challenges, maintenance issues for us there. The little box, uh, planted there have been uprooted by the roots. And so, uh, I think, I think we need to really think about their properly that have memorials. Uh, and then in context of the suicide prevention policy, the guidance says, um, you need to treat deaths the same regardless of how the death comes about. Whether it's an accident, whether it's an illness, whether it's suicide, you need to have to treat everybody the same way. So, um, so with that, uh, you know, in reviewing our policy and looking at what our practice has actually been with memorials, which has been really limited. Uh, we re, I rewrote the policy to reflect what I think is best practice. And that is, um, any memorial should just be small plaqueed for most that we put inside of the school building. Uh, we've done that at, with the nails that passed into Oliver Roberts, um, six years ago. Uh, there are a couple, maybe Hill Press, Capitaria, where some students have passed away. And then they created a scholarship fund memorial of students. So I think like that's the right way to approach it. So it's just for your initial consideration. Lots of time to think about it. Uh, this is one I can definitely so draft. This would be my proposed, uh, revision to that policy.
Any questions? Our planning, personal reports, headwaters. Tom? John, we've got to have a discussion, by the way, from an item that was in the consent tab.
It's, it's done. We consented so easily. It makes me feel bad. Not really.
Yes, the headwaters contract. Um, this is for the C M G C work. Uh, that will be done at, uh, a variety of our schools over the course of the next three years or so using the state funding that we have received. Uh, the, the terms of that contract very, very similar to, uh, the previous contracts we've done with headwaters. The structure will set up the same, uh, three and three quarters on their fee and half a percent for preconstruction services. Um, and then the one thing that'll be kind of something to watch for is rather than try and do all these projects under one umbrella, we will create uh, a different, uh, toll. The abbreviations of G M P are guaranteed maximum price, which is the actual, you know, the bids go out and we put together the package for each individual project. So each of those, like when we do the, uh, certain amount of work at Bonneville, the roof, for instance, a couple things, that will be one G M P. Uh, when we go back and do the science rooms at Bonneville, that year was seven. Uh, G M P. So you'll see those come through and those will be, uh, the actual hard uh, figures for costs associated with each project in those, uh, G M Ps. And then we'll district this contract for each of those. This is just a kind of an umbrella for what they're gonna do for us, with dials in those fees uh, over the course of the next few years and also stipulates some key things about how we're gonna interact uh, with one another. Uh, it was all run through our council, Tom Mortel, the college officer. Uh, he made, uh, some adjustments under some negotiations back in court for headwaters. In the end, it really, uh, what we've got and carries forward uh, a great, uh, situation that we have, which kind of maintained over the last seven years. Uh, with headwaters.
Justin, Mr. Paul. Thank you, sir.
All right, I think we need an action on.
Oh, all right. We can probably do that. We need an action.
I move to approve the headwaters C M G C contract as initially.
It's been moved by Mr. Hess through the headwaters C M G C contract.
I'll second it.
And accepted by, on favor.
Thank you. Uh, tonight in executive session, we discuss employee U twenty twenty five. And we would like to make recognition to release that contract through our district.
I'm going to accept the recommendation, releasing employee U plus twenty twenty five.
It's been heard by Mrs. Coats. Release employee U twenty twenty five from the contract.
I'll second.
Accepted by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Motion checks. Thank you. New courses. Sounds like we're going to.
Sounds like.
Sounds like we're gonna run a ship to the harbor there if we're gonna do a new course.
We just might. So every year, our secondary high school teachers have it together and, well, usually about January coming up, this is where you. Um, you send them to the district, you know, I was sent into the district, the district. And then they, they send to the department chairs in each, um, content areas, like math, English, uh, social studies, science, and then fine arts. Uh, foreign language, uh, just all those classes. And then they, they go through and just check to see what's in the course, and then conversations about, uh, the building levels. If they feel like they add resources, um, and then, uh, a couple of things. Um, we bring all those departments together, they finalize, uh, courses that they need to have. Um, and typically every next year, we have about twelve over ten resources. Uh, some of them name changes, some of the teachers have been higher, they, they were top three of the day. Well, this class, so you do about twelve to plus that, um, as new courses to our students. And so that's what we're going to do is, uh, most courses that the teacher brought back to the university for next year. And then, and then how the process will evolve is, uh, students will make sure you're fast to the rest. That, um, so we took a brand in the high school. I should raise the students by going and choosing the classes for next year and that starts at March. And so Are there any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Lawrence? And we need a motion.
I'm going to approve any courses for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Moved by Mrs. Coats.
I'm seconding.
Accepted by Mrs. Tate. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And student religious activities in school.
The, the next item, uh, we did in our, yes, religious activities in school. This, the rapid one now to, um, to review. And really the purpose of the updates of this is a case, uh, twenty twenty two. We, the coach who was, was bringing up. And we, we had a employee ask a question, hey, can a coach create the team or whatever? Just bring up the game. And I was like, there's two years ago, this is not, not gonna happen. But with that change, um, it's a strange case that what they will say is, is the, well, he is not going to be this time, um, I could, I could do this. So my suggestion to the coach, um, the kids are leaving our games too. And I remember some of the special grays. But, um, we like this policy in the right to.
Questions? Do we need an action item?
I'm going to approve the, the post policy twenty three fifty student religious activity at school for public review.
Been moved by Mrs. Tate.
I'll second.
Accepted by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Motion checks. All right, some sign books?
Yeah, yes. Okay, well, the, the three books, also will be erased, also, um, and I, Doc, that is. Uh, to have one more stories, um, yeah, Doc, doctors, one of the teachers, I should use his books and share some of them. And, uh, doctors, centers, and so she's been going in and that's reading these books. Yes, be your dominant on it. It's just an awesome, awesome activity. That was the purpose of these books to.
Makes a lot more sense. I was like, are we just on one theme?
Makes a lot more sense. I was like, are we just on one theme?
All right, we're taking motion of all three of those.
It was really fun.
Us, us.
The American dogs are being, then putting together the art of our history, that is, it was possible.
And you're the instructor of that class?
Yeah.
Applause for you. Thank you. That is really cool to do something.
I was, I was lucky to have to do, uh, two years, maybe that's over two years ago, I was like ace last week, but two years ago, I was able to, really, I was shooting, two operations in her, she was, it's, it's, it's.
Thank you. We got Major Robb. Thank you. Do we need a motion for all three of those?
I'm going to approve Balto in the Great Race. Um, Balto in the Blue Dawn, and Doc Diaries number four to go as supplemental correction on the first book.
It's been moved by Mrs. Coats.
I'll second it.
Accepted by Mrs. Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
It's not there, motion?
All right, tell us about the point.
And then we have, um, our, our lesson is a district group, and, um, as we went through, just as we did uh, in our, and should continue to review it. Uh, the teacher had two marks, which would agree to review this. But the name of the district is Lucky Steph, and, um, that's, like a lot of our musicals, say, the uh, who's, the least and old nineteen fifties. And to me, what it might be of is, um, yeah, we can, we can advertise here. Uh, but, yeah, this is an apologize, and he's giving six million dollars to his nephew. But we're going to, you know, put a, yes, to his, I don't know, to your party. And it was, it was nothing I, just a lot of, um, arts, uh. Still experience.
There is no one that plays.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we would need a motion for Lucky Steph.
I move to approve the play Lucky Steph for a high school drama.
Been moved by Mr. Hess.
I'll second it.
Accepted by Mrs. Coats. Almost. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, would anyone like to add some agenda items for upcoming meetings?
Yeah. Or, what was that?
For next week, um,
It's on the calendar.
Yes. It's on the towers, yes, and, that's the attendance, nice to be, like.
Didn't they, oh, wait.
The invitation.
Um, just, um, last year, is the last year we got together. Just if, if we want, if we want to get together to be over there. Probably wise to move that.
I wouldn't mind coordinating before we go in, so I'd suggest we do that. I mean, no other reason to make sure we're all in the right place at the right time.
Um, so what timeline is the Asian work? And I personally, I'm probably not considered that several.
It's coming in hot.
You wanna do breakfast Monday morning? Do that.
Is it, does it? There'll be a house, there'll be a house and a meeting, probably Monday morning at nine. So we could be before that.
Yeah, I'm alright, my, yes, seven or something, late.
Yeah.
I won't be there, we don't see.
Well, I'm kinda like you, eight o'clock, eight in the evening.
Why don't we say eight thirty? I don't, I, I probably just saw when you were there.
Eight thirty, Sunday night?
Yes. And, yeah, we'll just do the lobby. Okay, so just notice that it's four o'clock.
What hotel are we staying in?
Uh, the, the Home Suites where we stayed before. The Home Suites on Pearl.
Okay.
Try to pass potato jokes.
Yeah.
All right. Any other items?
Tom, I guess it's time, but I move to adjourn the meeting.
It's. It's moved by Mrs. Coats, that we adjourned.
I'll second it.
Denied by Mrs. Clayton, all in favor?
You know not to step in front of that.